Yeah, I just saw your email. Although I don't know if your mic is.
Interesting, and it was clean, so we're good. So I'll call the meeting to order and ask for roll call.
Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Freeman.
Present.
Commissioner Silvis.
Here.
Commissioner Diana.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we have a quorum. So the first item on our agenda is the approval of our minutes from our meeting on March 26th. You got those minutes in your packet, so is there a motion for approval?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Deshaun. Is there a second?
I read it, so it's second.
Is there discussion? Corrections? Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'll call for the question of approval of the minutes from March 26, 2024. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. The minutes from March 26, 2024 have been approved. Next on the agenda are any additions to the agenda for this evening's meeting? Any additions to the agenda?
We have no additions to the agenda.
Is there, was there any public input received?
No.
No one's present, so that takes us down to presentations. So are there presentations?
Yes, we have a staff report with a couple of updates. So first I'll hand it over to Nick, who was able to attend a national training, and he'll just share a little bit about some updates from, from the HUD training that he attended.
I'm sure. So last month, I was able to attend a training on CDBG administration and underwriting in Columbus, Ohio. Very exciting stuff, at least for me.
Well, if I was there, it would have been woo.
Sponsored by the National Community Development Association. Did I get that acronym right, Brayden?
Yes, you did.
Okay. So there was some good training on, you know, just how to evaluate projects fairly, as well as identifying projects that are going to be insured for success and have the maximum impact with our program funds. Also got to see some real-world examples in Columbus of projects that had been funded with home and CDBG funds, such as housing projects, urban agriculture, and some infrastructure projects. So always a good experience to get to sit down with other communities and seeing how folks are using these funds.
Thanks, Nick. So the next item on the, the staff report is just an update on our HUD allocations for this upcoming fiscal year FY '25. So again, this is for our community development block grant, CDBG, and our home investment partnership program. We were notified back at the beginning of May of what our fiscal year '25 allocations were going to be, and unfortunately, we are going to be seeing a decrease in funding for this upcoming fiscal year. Both programs are combined. We're going to see a reduction of about 21% in our federal funding for these two programs. So just to give you the numbers behind that, so for context, in FY '24, our CDBG allocation was $498,343, and our home allocation was, which is the Home Consortium, which is Champaign-Urbana and the county, was $779,013. In this upcoming fiscal year, we will be receiving a CDBG allocation of $389,487, and our home allocation has been reduced to $612,367. So again, a 21% decrease across both of those funding allocations. There's not really a clear answer as to why we're, we're seeing those reductions. HUD is, is facing budget cuts. That's part of it nationwide, so it's not necessarily unique to Urbana to see cuts like this. Some other communities in central Illinois were also seeing decreases in funding. The home program specifically, HUD, was cutting funding nationwide, so that explains why we saw that reduction. But the good news is, we're not anticipating any program or service disruptions. We're, you know, still able to carry out all of the programs that we said we were going to, and so we're, we're in a good place. That's mostly because we have some prior-year balances that we're carrying over that can fund these programs ongoing. So for this upcoming year, again, we're not going to be seeing any service reductions or disruptions or anything like that. And then fingers crossed for next year that we get kind of a bounce back. It can be kind of hard, you know, HUD doesn't necessarily give us explanation or information as to why they make the decisions they make. We get what we get and do the best we can. So that's just an update on, on that. Are there any questions?
Hey, Brayden.
Yeah.
Do you, I know Urbana had a poor, a poor, I can't think of the words, sorry about that. When we had our census results, we didn't have a good census of Urbana, and I know that affects federal dollars and et cetera. Do you think maybe that that may have been some of the issue?
I, I think it's safe to assume that that has something to do with it. So HUD, the, the formula that HUD uses to make these allocations take into account many different factors. The census just being one of many different data points that they look at. So I do suspect that that has something to do with it. Again, I think it's more likely that it's just kind of national belt tightening, and they're kind of trying to shift things around due to budget cuts. That would be my, my, my first guess. But I think it's safe to assume that the, that the census has something to do with it as well.
Any other questions or comments on the topic?
So then, a couple other just quick Grants Division updates. We had our neighborhood cleanup day on Saturday, May 18th. Was that last Saturday? No, Saturday before last.
Not this past weekend, the one before.
So that's a longstanding event that we've had, providing a service to our low-income census tracts. We had a really good turnout. Did you have those numbers?
Yep. So at the drop-off site, we had 115 households attend. And then for the courtesy collection for seniors and persons with disabilities, we had 78 pickups.
So that's a great event, and again, it's, it's an event that targets our, our low-income area, residents in our low-income area. So we're excited about that turnout. Also, just a point of information, so we do, we are currently offering a roof repair and replacement program for low-income homeowners in Urbana. This is a program that's actually funded through the city's ARPA funds. We just want to get the word out there that this program is available. We have, we have the funds available to spend through December 31st of this upcoming year, so we want to make sure that we're, especially now that it's, you know, construction season and, and, you know, that work is kind of ramping up. We just want the community to be aware, and all of you to be aware, that if you know anyone who could benefit from that program, again, to receive up to $15,000 in assistance for roof, you know, maybe it's kind of minor repairs or even up to, you know, full replacement, that that isn't a, a program that we have. They do need to be income-qualified, so they need to be considered low-income. But if there's anyone that you know or that reaches out to you about it, please feel free to refer them to us. We have pamphlets and information. We will be at the SUNA Neighborhood Meeting on Thursday, and I'll, I'll have some materials to hand out as well. But just to have it on your radar if anyone asks about housing rehab resources. And then lastly, just a staffing update. We're excited to announce that on Tu, next Tuesday, the 4th, we will be welcoming a new staff member to the Grants Division. Cameron Mesmer will be beginning his position as the Community Development Specialist, so he'll be joining Nick and I. He has a lot of strong experience running housing rehab programs, working with federal grant programs, so we're very excited for that. And so I anticipate that in an upcoming meeting, you will have the opportunity to meet him. So that's all I have for our staff report.
Any questions or comments on the staff report? Thank you. Thank you, Nick and Brendan. That takes us to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the commission this evening?
There's no unfinished business.
And then, it looks like we have several items under new business.
Yeah, so the first item under new business is a, a loan modification for 810 East University. So just a little context to this. Back in 1992, the Grants Division did a whole house rehabilitation program for a low-income homeowner at 810 East University. So as a result of that, they have a, a loan on their house that, for the home funds, in the amount of $17,500. So they contacted the city about potentially selling, again, their low income, and they were asking if there, if there was a possibility that that loan could be forgiven. The terms of the original agreement were that if they were to sell, they'd have to pay back that $17,500. I, I looked in the records, and the Community Development Commission does have the authority to modify that to a, to a deferred payment loan. So that would enable them to, at the sale, that would enable us to just forgive it. You know, again, it's funds from 1992. I don't think we were expecting to see that come back anyway. So it, there's, there wouldn't be any budgetary impacts on us to, to allow that. Again, it is something the commission has done before, so we're just asking to, the authority to modify that document.
This is, I have a question. This is for the sale of the property, so we're waiving the lien, correct? That's on the property?
Correct.
So where are the $17,500 going to go?
It would just be forgiven. So rather than having it repaid to the city, if it was repaid to us, we would return it to our home program income fund, which we could then use for other home programs. This is just forgiving it so that we, we wouldn't get it back.
Okay, because then it'll be a profit for the buyer.
I, I suppose technically, again, they were, they were low-income, so given the circumstances, and again, it was from 1992.
So we're, we're forgiving it for them, but not for the property?
Correct.
I want to make, I just don't want to give someone who is a, who doesn't benefit from it extra cash, when we can give it to somebody else.
Correct.
So if we're forgiving it for them, I would approve it, but I wouldn't forgive it as we move in the lien off the property?
Correct.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Was that originally set up to be done, if I'm recalling? When those were originally done, they were done with monthly payments being made?
Not the original document for this specific one, not for this one specifically.
So that had written back in '92, I believe you said, so that was just essentially us giving them funds for that particular property with no intentions of it being repaid, essentially?
With, the way the document reads is that it stated that at the, at the time of sale, it would, they would have to repay that. There was a, there was a five-year affordability period that they had to meet. And so within that five years, we would not have the authority to forgive it. But if they exceeded that five years, then it would, the decision could revert to the commission to forgive the $17,500, or, or whatever balance is left on it.
Okay.
But if they weren't making payments, why are we, what are we talking about? If there was a balance, why would the balance have ever been anything different than that?
If they had been making payments, then there, there could feasibly have been a smaller balance. They hadn't, they have not since 1992 made payments on it, so it is the full $17,500.
Yeah, because I was, this was a few years before I was on the commission, just a few. But as I was recalling, the ones that we did at those times were designed to be repaid or recovered.
Yes.
Because that's part of what kept the whole home re-tab program going, was getting those funds recovered.
And that's something to clarify. We do this differently now, but how this original document in 1992 was written, that, that gives us the ability to do that.
Do you have an approximate value on this house right now?
I, I do not have that handy right at this moment.
So how many of these are still out there that this might be, I mean, I'm just seeing, wondering if this is going to be friend or if this is just the last of those deals?
Typically, so I, I would say this comes up as an issue, like, at most once a year, and it tends to be, I think the last time it came up, when Sheila was manager, it was the situation where the original homeowner had passed away, and they were, and the daughter was dealing with the estate, and so it tends to be more elderly couples. I don't have a number in terms of how many there are. Unfortunately, just over the years, we didn't, I mean, we have a spreadsheet of all of the, of all of the, the mortgages, but we haven't really tallied them up recently. I would say there's probably between 20 or 30 within this. But again, some have been paid. You know, it kind of depends on the individual situation, but most of the households tend to be elderly.
There's not necessarily a lack of, just like negligence as much as just circumstances.
Correct.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm just concerned, because this is my concern. My concern is investors. There's key investors that are investing in property in Champaign County, and what they do is they come in and they buy up these properties, et cetera. I just don't want to release the debt. I'd rather have a lien placed on the property while releasing this person from paying the debt back to us. I just don't want investors taking money intended to help individuals to gorge their pockets. I, I just feel strong about that.
Well, I, I don't think that's something you can control through this mechanism, because any, anyone buying this property will be able to be aware that there is a lien on it, whether it's forgiven or not. And there's no way to preclude whether the buyers or sellers take that into account, whether or not it's being forgiven as to the price they're willing to pay or not pay, et cetera, depending on where it lands.
I wasn't talking about that particular issue. That, that is correct. What I'm saying is I would like us to put a lien on that property for our funds. That's a whole separate piece.
Then we would not be forgiving the loan. We would be transferring the loan from the
Right.
Individual, made it to the one who's purchasing.
That's right, to be actually to the property itself.
But I believe that that's actually what the lien is, the lien is on right now. Lien is not personal. None of these ever are. It's a property lien. So the lien is to the property at the moment.
If it's to the property, then we don't have to deal with it, then with the person.
Except that the document says that upon sale, the, the owner is responsible to pay it back.
And will still have to be cleared at closing, but the lien is on the property right now. It's not on the
So we're just looking to take it off of the homeowner?
Right.
Okay.
Well, yeah, but I don't know that there's a mechanism to take it off of the homeowner without taking it off.
Right, that's what I'm saying. You have to take it completely off.
Right.
And then you have to release that obligation, then you have to submit another obligation.
I don't believe that you could actually create out of whole cloth an obligation to somebody who didn't incur it for a rehab that was done 30 years ago. Would seem like a stretch legally.
I'm a property guy. You can if you want to. You can, but it won't close. I mean, it's just
Well, it won't close, and you won't, when speaking of investors or even homeowners,
Right.
Won't have people buying it if they're going to also inherit a, a 30-year-old loan automatically.
Depends where that property's located.
Well, not to the buyer's ideal.
Not to one's ideal.
So 30 years ago, this was funds that were provided to that family
For low-income persons, they were able to move in.
That they could stay in the home, that they could, that they didn't have to move, they could meet that obligation, keep the home in there, on the tax rolls, et cetera. And so it served the purpose. It, it provided that family with stable housing, and they stayed there, and they didn't just, you know, the five-year turnaround is so that they don't take advantage of the program and sell it at a, at a profit. They did not do that. So to me, I feel like the purpose of that was achieved at this point.
Well, I'm getting to the other purpose. Now, I'm not talking about as far as being compassionate and all that stuff. That, that's, that's a given. It's the fact that the original persons were just making sure that we had the funds come back so we can help other persons. That's where my point is. It's not about, you know, justice or anything like that. It's about making sure it's being true to the purpose of the $17,500, which was, we'll help you, but we want to be able to help other persons. Now, if we're going to do that, then we need to just do that continuously forward. You're setting the precedence that we don't have to obligate people to debt.
And, and another point, just if this helps clarify at all, so this was for the whole house rehabilitation program. We do not offer that program anymore. I, I mean, potentially could in the future, but we, we have not offered it for several years.
It would be 30 years ago when you could rehab a whole house for $17,500.
Only us old people were around then.
I was on the playground, you know, around that time.
So the options are for us to recommend that this be removed, that the obligation be removed. If we say no, then from the sale of that property, this fund would have to be reimbursed. And you're saying equity in that property to pay the $17,500?
No, you're not saying that.
I, I'm not necessarily. I'm, I'm, that, those are the options, however. We can either forgive it, or at the time of the sale, enforce the provision, and they'll have to repay it.
You know why they're, are they moving to another location, another home, or do you know the circumstances of this?
Excuse me. I, I don't know too, too much of the circumstances. Again, they are an eld, it is an elderly couple. I, I don't know if it's perhaps their children moved out or what the situation is specifically.
They're, they're still alive.
Well, I'm here. I'm 30 years ago. Call for the question. Move on.
So we need a motion. The staff recommendation is that we amend that mortgage to be deferred payment loan with a balance of $17,500 released at the time of sale. That's what the staff recommends. But is there a motion?
All for quiet? Come on, guys. I call for the question. So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there a discussion on the motion to recommend that the mortgage be a deferred payment loan with a balance released at the time of sale? That's what the motion is.
For me, I don't have enough information on what the actual financials are on this property to really feel comfortable voting one direction or the other.
I think, I think Brayden, what, what we probably are struggling with is that we, we don't have a Zitsch and Laban. We don't have that background data. I mean, you have the data as far as contracts and agreement. But I think the human side is what I think we're struggling with. We're not struggling with up or down, but is it possible to delay this 30 days or not? Do you know?
Yeah, I mean, I think we could move it to a future agenda for more information and discussion. I think that would be fine.
Then I would make an amendment that we would table this until we get some more information so we can make a more informed decision. And in that, give us more of the background or sort of financials so that we can clearly know what we're voting up or down.
Sure.
What's the deadline on, I mean, is this, is, are they, are they wanting to sell it and just kind of getting the books in order? Or what's the deadline for?
I think they're just getting their, their ducks in a row at this point, but I'll, I can follow up with more information on that process as well.
I guess it would be helpful to know kind of what the, what, what's like, what are the consequences of either one of those kinds? That would be helpful as we think about it.
So there's a motion on the floor to table it until the next meeting?
We better have a second.
Oh, was there a second? Oh, Deshaun, I'll second.
I'll second. So any discussion of that motion to table this question? Call for the vote on that motion, the motion to table the discussion. So all in favor of tabling this discussion to the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So the ayes have it, and we've tabled that discussion.
Thank you.
I guess the other motion just died for lack of
All right, so I'll talk about the, the next item under new business, which is the Housing Program Manual Amendment. So this is related to a HUD rule that went into effect in April, which now requires consideration of RADON as part of the environmental review for projects receiving assistance from HUD. So this would impact any of our rehabilitation or new construction projects that we work on. And consideration of RADON can mean different things depending on where you are in the country. RADON levels on average in the Midwest tend to be fairly high, so in our context, So in our context, um, it's effectively going to require that we test for radon in any rehabilitation or new construction projects receiving assistance. Um, and then if average radon levels on a property are found to be over a certain threshold, that's a 4.0 picocuries per liter, if that means anything to you. We are then required to mitigate for radon. Good news is that testing and mitigation are eligible program expenses for the home and CDBG programs. Based on conversations with contractors in the area, we're expecting, um, about $150 to $200 for testing. And then if mitigation is required, um, depending on the particulars of the property and, and the radon contamination, it'll typically range from between about 1,500 to 3,000, um, but maybe a little north or south of that. Again, just depending on the project. Um, so in line with this new requirement, we are proposing some amendments to our Housing Program Manual, which would increase the, um, allowed expenditure cap for all of our housing rehabilitation programs by $5,000 in circumstances where radon mitigation is found to be required. Um, this would allow us to continue to undertake projects that would otherwise now be over the assistance limit if we find that mitigation is required. Um, the downside is that this could potentially reduce the number of projects, uh, we can do in a year just by increasing the average project cost. But again, it's going to allow us to continue to undertake projects we, we would have been able to undertake previously, but as our limits are currently structured, uh, we might not be able to. So that's the, the main, um, change that we've proposed to the Housing Program Manual. Um, and then we've just, um, added some additional details on timeline and procurement for, uh, the testing and mitigation as part of rehab projects.
And so these changes will bring our manual into compliance with HUD's new, um, regulation as, as Nick mentioned. So the, the motion would be to approve, um, these changes to the manual, um, so that we can be in compliance. So are there any questions about that at all or?
I put this up with lead poisoning. So I am ecstatic that this is in this, um, I am ecstatic about this, so I so move.
Second.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Deshaun, thank you. Uh, so there's a motion and a second to recommend the changes to the housing manual as written. Uh, is there any discussion?
My only discussion would be that I assume that this is a mandatory situation. There's no flexibility to doing this on all projects, if I'm reading this correctly.
That's correct. There, there are certain kinds of assistance we provide, like, uh, rental assistance. Um, since there's, there are no changes to a property happening there, um, we're not required to test for that kind of thing. But generally, again, any rehabilitation or new construction, we have to test for. It's possible, um, that, you know, maybe as construction practices change, um, average levels in the area could go down. Um, it's basically because, um, the state and, um, Center for Disease Control maps show that on average, um, our zip codes and the county overall are over that 4.0 picocuries per liter threshold that we are then required to test. So were that to change, um, we wouldn't necessarily have to test. We could just say regional, um, levels on average are below this level and it's assumed that it's not an issue. But currently, yes, we are going to have to test on most of our projects.
Yeah, I mean, you won't find houses that normally fall in our rehab programs. You won't find any of them in Urbana. Aren't likely to be over that level. It's an extremely low level we test to here with questionable equipment for accuracy on what we're testing to. Four, that four picocuries is the equivalent of four parts per million roughly. And it's done with equipment that can't be calibrated closer than plus or minus two picocuries. So it will almost always come back positive, especially if it's a crawl space house or has one of the older basements with open drains or open sumps, you can almost guarantee. Literally a fixed cost added to it. Are you going to be working with specific contractors or most of this kind of business is done by home inspectors in this area?
We have, we have contracted with certified radon testing contractors. Yep.
Is the same, is the testing contractor also the remediation?
No, they have to be separate.
Right, okay, good.
Any more discussion on the motion? Okay, I call the question. All, uh, in favor of that motion to make the amendments to the housing manual as written, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? The ayes have it and the, uh, motion passes. So we are recommending that those changes be made to the housing manual as written. Thank you. Um, then that takes us to the third item under new business. The Resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a sub-recipient agreement, community block grant agreement for the rape advocacy counseling and education services, survivor services, trauma therapy. So.
Thank you. Um, so this is our last item on, on new business tonight. So, uh, part of the Community Development Commission's role is to approve, uh, funding, um, through our Community Development Block Grant Public Service Funding. We have a 15% set aside for public services that we can use every year. So based on our FY25 allocation, that's, that means we have $58,000 total that we can use for, um, public service programming in the upcoming fiscal year. So, um, the resolu- um, the agreement or the memo that you see before you tonight, uh, is for $30,000, to, to commit $30,000 of that $58,000 total to RACES, to support their Survivor Services, uh, Trauma Therapy Program. They submitted a funding proposal as part of the city's annual youth services grant program. And so there was a, a grant review committee that recommended their program for funding in the upcoming year. And then staff determined that it would be appropriate to fund their program with Community Development Block Grant Funding. I, you should be able to see on your computers, these are all of the application, these are all of the proposals that we will be funding in the upcoming year. So the total comes to, um, $274,000. Like I said, RACES, we are funding with our Community Development Block Grant. The remaining programs that we're funding will be funded with, um, city general funds, pending approval of the city's FY25 budget. So again, tonight, you're just voting on RACES' specific proposal and, um, whether or not to fund it with, uh, $30,000 of Community Development Block Grant Funding.
Thank you, Brendan. Um, any, any questions?
Two questions. One is.
Can you pull your microphone closer, please? Thank you.
I'm sorry about that. Why did they, uh, why did they feel the Tagor Academy, uh, would get funded, you know?
Um, so you'll see there, um, several agencies submitted applications for multiple programs, which is allowable. Um, you know, we have to make sometimes hard funding decisions. We did have a, um, the review committee utilized a scoring rubric to score programs, looked at kind of need, how they were addressing need, making sure we're filling gaps in services. So all of those types of decisions went into whether or not to fund a specific program. And so these were the, the recommendations that, that came out of it. Again, this is all pending final council approval, so these are, are tentative recommendations at this time. But this is what the committee originally came up with.
And is there anywhere that we can modify or do we have to go to city council to modify?
Um, you can provide, uh, you can provide suggestions, absolutely.
I'm asking a different question. I'm asking, you bring it to our committee so we can approve it, then you pass it to the city or you're just giving us a FYI?
So this is really just an FYI.
Okay.
What you're approving tonight is the $30,000 in CDBG funding to RACES specifically, which is listed on here. Yep.
All right.
Any other questions?
I was, no, I was going to make the motion to approve.
Ready for a motion? Okay, thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve the, uh, the $30,000 for the races.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second, Chris, thank you. Uh, any other discussion? I'll call the motion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Approved, uh, denied, same cl- same sign? So we've approved that recommendation to, um, authorize the execution of that sub-recipient agreement.
Thank you. And we have, we have no other items on new agenda, on new, new business.
Seeing that there are no other items on the agenda, we are adjourned. Thank you.